Welcome to the next chapter. And before we get started, before we call the meeting to order, I'd like to ask Commissioner Evans if you would give the invocation and then we'll have the pledge of allegiance. So Commissioner Evans?
If you bow your heads please. Good morning, Mr. President. We thank thee for all your bountiful blessings that you bestow on us daily. We ask that you continue to bless Monroe County and all of its citizens, all of our leaders, and protect all of the sick and shedding today. Let them have comfort and hopefully next meeting they will attend. Look down on this meeting in a very, very gentle way and let the things that happened here this morning be productive for all of the citizens in Monroe County. I want to pray for the health and strength of everyone under the sound of my voice and all of Monroe County. I want to pray for all of our national and state leaders also. And feed the world and let us have peace and happiness. These are the blessings we pray in thy son Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. This time, this Abbott, if you would, please, please give the roll call.
Chairman Greg Tapley?
I'm here.
Mr. Ambrose?
I think I'm here.
Mr. George Mami?
Here.
Mr. Larry Adams?
Here.
Mr. Eddie Rowland?
Here.
All right. Here and as we have a quorum, and all folks are here, and the time has arrived, I'd like to call this meeting of the Monroe County Board of Commissioners to order. First item on the agenda, and first I want to apologize to the folks that have an agenda out there. The prayer and pledge are supposed to be before the call to order and the roll call. So understand that that's why we made that change. I don't see an approval for the agenda, which we usually have, but at this time I would need to, I would like to add one item to the agenda under the regular session, actually put it above after the minutes, and that's going to be a presentation from the city about a canine unit. We have, we've got Mayor Wilson here today. Welcome Mayor Wilson to speak on its behalf. I tell you what, even though it's not on here, I'd like to, with that, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the agenda with the addition of that presentation by the city as the second item after the minutes.
Second?
And I got a motion and a second to approve the agenda as noted. Do I have any discussion on that? Here, none. I'll call the question, all in favor. All right, the agenda's been approved. The first, the first item on the agenda before any of our regular session is we've got Ms. Stacy Nestor here to speak, and so Ms. Nestor, if you would, come up please and give us your presentation.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
My name is Stacy Nestor of the local authority on Monroe, and I ask to speak today about how we can handle animals as it is now and as it can be in the future. Before I start, I want to let the commissioners know that I'm not here to prevent or bring up anything that happened in the past. There are some things that I think concern about. If it was thrown out, I don't think that that's going to serve any good purpose. It's not going to propel us forward. Certainly, I'm answering questions if anybody has those to be said that I can answer, I will. If it's fleshed out, additionally, when I do, you know, I'm happy to respond to that. But I asked to speak today about animal control because I think that with a very few small tweaks to how we are handling animal control and procedures there, we can increase its benefit to our county. If we implemented just a few different operating procedures. Other animal controls have adopted those. They're kind of the industry standards. They work well for other animal controls, and I think it's going to make it possible to get the animals out of the facility faster and overall those animals will be in better health. And I think we can do this all without increasing the cost to county. Some, I know that we've kind of gone through this process, we have a new animal control director and things have changed. I've heard a lot, some people voicing that they, they think that maybe we don't need an animal control. Obviously, being an animal, an animal welfare, I, I think we do, but more than just me, I think the people of our county want it. I think they expect that our county's going to be progressive and that we're going to provide a place for their lost dog or their neighbor's lost dog to go and be held, held in a safe manner so that it can be retrieved by the owner. They want to see that we're handling our stray and surrendered animals in a humane way, a careful way, and they want to see those animals have a reasonable chance to get out of, out of animal control and into good homes instead of out of animal control into bad homes. I think we can accomplish all of those goals. If we are willing to talk about maybe changing, let's just say just a few of the procedures within animal control itself. We already have the building and the kennels and the wonderful fenced area now for the dogs to exercise. We already have an animal control officer to respond to strays, animals in distress. We've already have that gentleman there. We have equipment either in place or on its way to be delivered that local rescue groups have provided and donated. We have a set of wall kennels that cost thousands of dollars that a local rescue donated to the county's animal control. If it's not there already, it's soon to be delivered, a modern scale to weigh our, to weigh the animals that it takes. We have volunteers, both past and present, who are willing to go in, do a lot of the chores there, cleaning kennels, feeding the dogs, walking the dogs. So just in my limited experience in bringing up the subject of maybe changing a few things at animal control, I've noticed that there's been some resistance. And I know that some people may feel like when a group approaches the county about how to handle something a little bit differently, sometimes it feels like you're trying to tell them how to do their job. And honestly, no one's trying to tell anybody how to do their job. What we're doing is asking the county to consider following a few modern, almost universally accepted, proven procedures that can make our animal control more effective and at the same time improving the overall care of the animals. That's not telling somebody how to do their job. Certainly, we have procedures in place for our other county departments. I know we're not sending folks out, say, on the road crew, just giving a couple pieces of heavy equipment. Here you go, here's, here's this and a couple loads of tar. How about? I mean, we've got, I know we have procedures, and it's a good thing to have. It makes us more effective. The work that's done is done right. So there's a benefit in that. Right now, our animal control really does not have any of those procedures. What we have now is what the state requires an absolute minimum with regard to housing the animals for a short period of time during a stray hold. Those, those are the absolute minimum, and if we just raise what we expect from that department, I think we can do a whole lot better and everybody's going to benefit. How, so how are we going to do this? And the answer is through animal rescue. And I know, I know that given some of the things that happened in the recent past, that might not sound real good to some of them, but animal rescue, those are people who want to take off of the county hands, county's hands, what you don't want anyway, what you're going to pay somebody to take off for you if we don't, if animal rescue doesn't. We're not asking the county for anything that you value. The last time I, and I, and I don't have numbers from our animal control, so I'm going to talk about this with regard to the information I have about good care. The last time I asked, make a bit of animal welfare, the percentage of animals that leave their facility due to rescue, the answer I got was eighty-five percent. Eighty-five percent. So if someone came here and was standing here and said to the commissioners, I want to haul away eighty-five percent of the things that the county no longer needs, outdated equipment, trash, whatever, whatever it is, I want to do, I want to take off eighty-five percent of what the county no longer needs, and I'm going to do it for free, absolutely free. You don't have to pay me for my labor. County does not have to pay for any insurance for my vehicles, nothing. But there are just a few small things that I need the county to do a little bit differently to make it possible for me to do that, to benefit the county in that way. I need you to use flat bags instead of heavy bags. So increase to the county what you care what kind of bags. I need you to put the bags, when you bag it all up, I need you to put it on this side of the curb and so that side of the curb. Okay? And increase the cost to the county. The bags that contain items from the library, I need those bags to have a sticker on them. We'll give you stickers. We'll give you those stickers. And I need there to be some efficient way that the county can communicate to our drivers what trash is available, when and where, so that they know where to go to pick up all this stuff that you bagged up, needled up. So we're going to use this kind of bag, put the bags here and up there, put a sticker on there, we're going to give it to you. And you got to keep us, we've got to have some way to communicate with each other, what's available to be picked up, when and where. So if somebody came in and said that, I mean, I would hope the commissioners would at least say, hey, that, that sounds prudent. Let's talk about that more. I would hope my county would not say, I'm going away. You're not going to come in here, tell us how to bag our trash. It's pretty much the same with animal rescue. What, what animal rescue can do for the county? Animal rescues that have, I mean, animal, I'm sorry, animal controls that have certain policies and procedures for intake, where different types of animals aid by age or housed versus other places, make rescue groups feel more comfortable that when they come in to rescue an animal, we're going to, it's going to be safe for them. They're not going to pull an animal, we're going to put it here as healthy, and then two days later this animal will break with some type of illness that got while it animal controlled, but they weren't symptomatic of that. It's going to reduce the likelihood, that rescue groups are going to be surprised by hidden, hidden issues with these animals. Obviously, when that happens, rescue groups are, are expecting that, they have increased veterinary costs, number of other things that, that come into play that, that are difficult for rescue groups in that situation. So without these protocols, these rescue groups, and honestly, as they have in recent years past, they're, they're not going to consider rescuing animals from our animal control. Because it's not safe for that. Animal rescue groups do rescue sick animals and injured animals, but just like anything else, you have to kind of be prepared for that. You have to have the funds available at that time, and then you, then you can, then you can help an animal in distress. But you don't have the funds available at that time. You can rescue a dog, but it just can't, at that time, can't be a sick dog that requires a lot of veterinary care. So there's a whole lot that goes into, it's not just folks showing up and saying, oh, that's, that's a dog, how about we rescue? You, we've got to take into consideration a lot of things. Do we have the foster for this type of dog, this age, this size? Do we have the money if this dog is likely to be sick or not? So when we implement, when there are certain procedures in place in animal control, we feel better, more confident that this is, this is an animal we can rescue effectively. It's not going to put the other animals in our rescue at, at risk, and we're, and we're putting it with the right foster. Now...
Hey Stacy, real fast, you're at eleven minutes so far, so just go ahead.
Two minutes.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm sorry. So the last thing really that I, that I want to say is that I am not here representing any rescue groups. I'm not, I'm not speaking for rescue groups. I'm speaking to you as a citizen of this county who's involved in animal rescue. And I, I spend a great deal of my time and effort, money, working for a cause that means a great deal to me. If we can't get our animal control up to the level of the animal control surrounding us, I'm going to continue rescuing. The group I rescue for is going to continue to go on. There are plenty of dogs out in Georgia that need rescue. They don't care if it comes from class here or minority county. But I want my efforts to benefit my county. I want the dogs in my county to have rescue. I want the animal overpopulation problem in my county to slow the decrease because of my efforts and the efforts of others in our county who also are in rescue. So I'm asking my county to consider this. Maybe we can have some type of meeting with the great, we can start talking about changing these procedures, because I, I don't want to continue helping every other county benefit and not like it.
Okay. Thank you very much for your presentation. What I'd suggest is, is you, what it sounds like is you've got policies and procedures, protocols that you want us to consider.
Yes.
Right. So our county manager, Mr. Jim Hedges, have you all interacted before or not?
No.
I have, I have very limited, and I...
Yeah, Jim, yeah. Jim Hedges is our county manager. What I'd suggest is get, get, you know, draw up your, your suggestions, bring them to Jim, let him look over them, then from there, end up getting together with, with Jim, our county manager, Ms. Nestor, tie in there, and, and, and then start talking through how that works and doesn't work, you know, for the county. I mean, for example, you know, we, we did have the USDA came down, everybody knows about that, they came down, they, they found a lot of things they didn't like, but they also didn't like one of the suggestions that we implemented, that some of the folks implemented about increasing the days. They didn't think we ought to go from three to seven days, but we went, and we went to seven, they said we shouldn't do that. So some of that stuff gets confusing. My whole point being, let's get together, kind of work through them, you know, talk through them practically, you know, as they, you know, you've got suggestions, we've got procedures that we, you know, that we currently have, and see how they mesh and, and go from there. Can y'all, can y'all, Jim, do you have a card?
I had sent an email to Mr. Hedges.
Okay. So you've got his contact information. If you would, y'all, y'all sit down, talk it through, and then he'll bring us a recommendation.
Okay.
Does that sound good?
Of course that, yes. I appreciate it.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, you got to get started, right? Appreciate you coming. And, and I'm sure we, all y'all that are here with Stacy, wave, raise your hand, you got a good crowd of support, so real good. Appreciate all y'all being here. All right, thank you.
Well, those statistics, you say you don't have Monroe County's statistics on euthanizing?
No, sir, I don't, um, I don't know, I'm sorry.
Well, we're under the impression, I am, that, that we euthanize very few, few, uh, dogs, very, very few. And, uh, those statistics can be made available to you. They've been shipped up to South Carolina, and this problem that just arose, we've got a brand-new pound manager that was brought in, Mr. Ambrose brought him in from Chicago or somewhere. And, uh, as, as far as I know, we have not had the problems that you touched upon, you know. If, if in fact, well, those statistics will be made available for you as quick as possible. And like I said, the euthanization, you said Bibb County only euthanized fifteen percent. I was thinking ours may be lower than that.
They actually, I, it was, how many lead through rescue? And that's about eighty-five percent. The other, majority of the other is leading through owner reclaims and actually community adoption.
Right.
But more than just euthanizing dogs, I mean, there are some issues there that have to do with, for instance, if, if these, if these protocols aren't followed, here are some of the things that can happen.
Well, I understand, but like I said, as far as I know, those infractions that were recently set upon the county, that's the first time that we've had anything like that. And we've had, we've had, we've been in this business since about nineteen eighty-eight or thereabouts. And so I'm open to it, but this catch, it catches me off guard, just like the write-up from the USDA. We've never had those problems before that I noticed, but like I said, Greg told you right, if you would just go ahead and get with Mr. Hedges and write it up, we'd be glad to go over it. Because I was under the impression everything was going hump the door, okay?
Yes.
All right.
But, thank you Stacy. All right. First item under the regular session on the agenda is the minutes approval. So I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes as they were presented.
Make a motion to approve as a normal thirty days.
Got a motion to approve the minutes. Do I have a second?
Second.
Got a second. Commissioner Roland, any discussion on the minutes?
One immediate correction, page six, the last line, the board unanimously voted to deny the application. That's not correct.
Hold on. Which one's, uh?
Page six, very last line.
Where do you see it?
Actually, we approved it three to two.
Where do you see that? Yeah. I see on, it's page six, it's three to two.
Page six says three to two down at the...
Oh, well, I picked this up Friday, you must have took it out.
It's in there. I think the new, yeah.
Oh, new one. Okay, you already corrected it then.
They got ahead of you.
Yeah, but it was in, I, I want everything on Fridays. So we can go, anything that's coming up, we can manually do it. I was up here Friday evening at three o'clock when Jim was getting off and the rest of them, and that's what I go by. So it's been, it's been deleted, okay?
Yeah, okay.
It was in there, the board unanimously voted to deny the application.
All right. But do you see in your, in your book now where it's changed?
Okay.
All right. Here, no further discussion. I'll, I'll call the question, all in favor of approving the minutes? Signify with say, okay. Any opposed? All right, the minutes have been approved. All right, at this time, Mayor Wilson, if you would, come up to the dais and, and I'll, I'll take this one and explain it first, and then, I'll tell you what, Mayor, if you would, if you'd present what you, what you, you've sent the emails and kind of tell us about what you want to talk to us about, about a canine unit from the city.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. Thank y'all for entertaining me and suddenly in this business because I do have enough meat and I'm a lot of space and a lot of that, but it's good, okay? Last night, I needed to give you a list of reasons why I was in 2017. We got back into the canine, been out of it for a while. All canine Rocky and had a handler, Corporal, Al Corporal, Lady Kendrick, who retrained and become a handler for the canine. And we brought the canine and trained it, and it's been used since that time, used very successfully in the canine control. And, well, our canine officer, our canine officer has given notice that he's leaving from New York and from Monroe County Sheriff's Office, and leaves us in a position to do something with canine Rocky. He's right now, and I have another handler, not interested in training another handler at this time, and Sheriff has indicated interest in transferring canine Rocky to the Sheriff's Office. So last night, the City Council voted unanimously to agree to enter into a government agreement, which would be wrapped in the board's review, and then our attorney was glad to grant that. The government agrees, wherein we will transfer canine Rocky to the county to be, continue to be used as a canine officer. And any seized funds generated directly by the use of canine Rocky, we would receive ten percent of that above what we were normally getting. For instance, there are some size bases that are written in the city, and canine would be, we'd get a hundred percent, as I understand, of those seized funds. We're not giving up that, we're just saying ten percent for the next twenty-four months, we're going to send canine Rocky to use for up to ten thousand dollars. That was what the motion was, to help lessen the cost of the cost that we incurred to get into the canine business and to transfer, to continue to use in this canine, rather than transferring to another county and sending to another jurisdiction and having a training in that county. So that was the, that was the motion from the council last night, and I'm glad to try to answer the question, but I'm not using most of all of them all.
Good question. Let me, well, I've got one, it may be the same as yours. What was the cost, initial cost for the dog and the training and equipment?
Well, we, we've spent altogether in excess of forty thousand dollars.
Part of that was...
That's more than we, we paid. A considerable amount of that is for the dog. I think probably about twenty thousand dollars for the dog and the training. And then we also take the officer, which is a regular thing, in order to house the dog, take care of the dog.
Okay.
Considerable expense.
Twenty thousand.
Yeah.
Okay.
Have you, have you talked with, I guess you've talked with Sheriff, our new Sheriff, Brad Freeman?
Sheriff Freeman did.
I have too. I'll tell you.
He is the chief, and he spoke previously, but I spoke to the sheriff last night, and he agrees to do what we want.
And how, how old is the dog? Let me address that, let me address that real fast too, because I've talked to Sheriff Freeman this morning. He, he's excited about it. He thinks it'd be a good addition to the, to it. I asked him about his funds, his budget, does he have it in his budget? I don't know if he, I don't know that he's talked with county manager yet, but he says that he has it in his budget already, so it wouldn't be an increased cost to the, to us. And, and he thinks it would be a good deal. So that's, that's Sheriff Freeman's comments to me about it this morning. So, you got another question?
Yeah, how old is the dog now?
I'm not sure. We thought it was about two years old when we got it. Somebody said last night they were saying it was about five years old. I'm not sure.
And how long have y'all had it?
We, we got it at seven, I think, now on the call.
Okay. That was the middle of the year. I was there the night that y'all approved it. It was the middle of the...
It was the middle.
Yeah.
It's been a year and a half or a little bit.
So, the...
Go ahead.
Help me understand the, so if, if the dog is utilized to seize, you know, any, any monies or drugs or whatever that we benefit from financially, if that happens within the city, you would get a hundred percent of that?
Well...
Well, there's some misdemeanor, for example, because I understand that term may be more completed with it. Somebody brought up the example that an ounce or less of marijuana that seeds, so that's a misdemeanor, and it's in the city, we would not share. That, that's already established in law, of course. I'm not sure of all the particulars, there's probably other examples that I'm not aware of, but all of them saying that we're not giving up, more if we're entitled to two hundred more all now, we're just saying in addition to that, ten percent of any seized revenues generated as the use of Rocky, and there's some honor involved in that, because the Rocky is used, we have other dogs too, so the other dogs will be used. It would be reported by the Sheriff's Office.
I got you. I got you.
But that's just a way that we kind of replay some of the money tax pay.
Sure. Let, let me throw out, because I asked some of this question to Sheriff Freeman as well, because I wanted to be clear, and also, and throw something out to you at the same time. For example, if this dog that they donated was used in a seizure, say in High Falls, it's in the county, not in the city, then normally what would happen is that would go through the DA's office, it would be, ten percent would go to the DA's office, ninety percent would come to the county. City would not get anything before this agreement. Then with this agreement in place, with the dog that they're donating, the city would get ten percent of that ninety, is my understanding.
Twenty-four months up to...
Up to ten thousand, which I, and just a...
No brainer, in my mind.
I mean...
Let's get it done.
Yeah, let's go ahead and do it. Well, and just one other, let me, let me, let me just...
Yeah, I, I do, I do too.
Okay. Yeah, go ahead.
First off, the sheriff says he's got the money to do it, so why are we going through twenty-four months of, of getting the money? If the sheriff's got the money, we, we can't tell him where to spend it, he can just write the check for ten thousand. But here's my other question, and I think I have to ask this on behalf of the county. You got an asset that you can't use, you, you need to do something with it. And I'm going to roll back to about six months ago, is we had an asset we couldn't use, and you said, hey, give it to us, we're going to use it. So we gave it to you. So why don't we do it with this?
Wow.
Pretty, pretty hard to do that. Same idyllic situation. Tell him what it was.
That's a good question.
Do you want to put a condition that has to be used nine months?
Or is it going to be used at the dog park to walk around?
Wow, sorry. I mean, that's a valid, that's a valid question too. Feel free to...
I mean, it's, it's fair. But they're, they were going to improve the park. That was part of the, I mean, that was... But they're, they were going to improve the park, that was part of the, I mean, that was part, there was going to be a return value to the county in that sense, you know. I mean, that's how I saw it anyways, but...
They've got, the way I look at it, for what it's worth, just Greg's opinion, is they spent, they've got an asset, and it costs them for that, but it would be an asset to us, and it would create money, and the, and the cost that we would incur would only come out of the dog's actual production, like a commission. That's the word I use, because that's the type of business I'm in, is, you know, but we wouldn't, it wouldn't have to be upfront. Eddie's point is also valid, if the city's interested, you just pay them...
I'd object to that, because we're going to have to spend $10,000, $20,000 taking an officer trained in.
No, 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 because the officer, no, here's the thing.
Well, look at it like this, that dog's liable to die next month.
Fair enough.
I agree to the two, two years, yeah, 10%. I'd go with that in a heartbeat.
Okay.
But not enough front, give you enough for the asset, Teddy. It looks to me like something might be wrong with that dog, otherwise, your police department would want to train that dog and keep it.
I mean, get another handler.
Really?
But I'd go with eight, I'd go with the two years, 10%.
The officer was interested in purchasing the dog in fact, and that, that's not permissible, and you can put the dog out for bid, it's an asset to the city, it's worth clearly worth $1,500. The dog would be better than like a lateral transfer in a government...
Let me ask you this, is Kendra going to get the same dog with Sheriff's fund?
Yes, yeah, I wanted to address that, because I've talked to the Sheriff.
That's where it'd save us on the handler.
Oh, absolutely. And he's also already got a vehicle. He's got what, a backup canine vehicle that now would just be this dog's canine vehicle, so there's no equip, there's no... And the city's got a bite suit and some other equipment that's supposed to come with the dog, things like that, that they bought at the time.
I make a motion we approve with it, but two years, 10%.
I'll second.
And that's going to be up to $10,000?
Yep.
And I was, I was, I had a thought about going up to 20, just because...
Well, he said 10, I'd go with what he said.
Okay. And I appreciate that, but I got a motion, I got a motion to accept y'all's proposal. I got a second from Commissioner Amami, any discussion?
Yeah.
Go ahead, Larry.
We got three of our four dogs out there now.
Hold that thought, do we, do we know?
I know we got at least three, maybe.
Three, one retired.
So, we're down to, we're going to be down to two?
He's already retired.
Oh.
Got four.
Okay, hell, that's for 100 years, but a dog is a costly proposition. And if, in fact, this dog, I wish you put it, if this dog died tomorrow, that Sheriff won't have to go back and replace him with another $20,000, $30,000 dog that you don't need. I don't think every officer need a dog. I don't, you know, it might look good on the pound, canine equipped, stand back, you know, that might look good, but you look at the cost, and we always, and just because you don't put something in the budget, we didn't put another dog in the budget that I know of, you know.
But we're about to retire, we've got it in the budget for a four...
He's already retired.
When did, already retired, hold on, hold on.
No, it had already retired, but one of the corporals that was handling the dog...